Good evening, welcome to the January 7th, 2020 meeting of the Middle School Committee. I'll start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted on the Middle School's public school's website under "School Committee." Next we'll take attendance. Ms. Roach is out tonight. Rob?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Denise?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Alright. Anybody sign in for open session? Then we will go right to representatives.
Thursday, four-day weekend, starting Friday the 17th. The second term of school ends the 17th as well, marking the halfway point of the year. Class dues have gone up by $10, prices vary by class, and there is a blood drive that's going to be placed Thursday, the 16th.
Thank you.
Let's go on.
And we have no new updates at Clyde Brown this week, but in the middle school, the Science Suicide Program was presented to the 7th graders on Monday during their science classes. All students who participated watched a brief video, engaged in discussion about the warning of suicide, questioned suicide, and completed a brief screening. Mrs. Lehman will follow up with students on it. It's at the has needed basis on Tuesday. Mrs. Lehman has been meeting a select group of 7th grade peer mediators since the beginning of the year. These students are being trained twice per cycle during lunchtime to become peer mediators in each section of the year. This is the first time a program like this has been implemented in middle school. So the team will begin with supporting their 6th grade counterparts through a minor complex with oversight of Mrs. Lehman. And Middle Brown, the support group for students who are part of, they are allies of the elementary school community, has started this year and is overseen by Mrs. Vanian and Mrs. Lehman. The group is open to all interested 7th graders. A Big Sisters program that was started last year as a senior project will continue this year as well, spearheaded by junior Allison Bennett and overseen by Mrs. Lehman. The program matches up middle school girls with high school girls. The girls have their lunch hours once to stay. The program was a big hit last year, and we have many participants ready to go again this year. And the high school, the high school band and chorus performed their holiday concert last weekend, Monday, January 6th, since their summer event was canceled for the weather. The high school students also enjoyed a brief concert by the both band and chorus on the day of school before vacation. And the winter issue of the Mohawk Post is now available on the school's webpage, and print copies are available in the library. Eleven articles from this past year's issues will be submitted for the NESCO localized article contest. And on Thursday, January 30th, the school library team council will have an all-day in-store career at Barnes &amp; Noble in Valnham. There will also be an open mic event to highlight student and staff talents from 4:00 to 7:00 at the store. Students who are staffed and interested in performing should sign up for library by January 26th.
Next, the most two. So first is consideration to approve the December 3rd and December 9th regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the December 3rd, 2019 and the December 9th, 2019 school committee meeting minutes.
Can I move the executive for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is our executive session minutes from March through December of 2019.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, do we need to highlight any of the highlights or any of the kind of decisions made on this in open session, meaning the contracts that now have been approved?
No, because any of the contracts that we approved in executive session, we subsequently did in open session on its own, just because it's a rule, is what the contract, in order for us to sign the contract. So these are just, really to just approve the minutes as presented. We don't have to take any action on anything that's in there.
Okay. It's been a while, but I don't remember or don't recall, but doesn't mean we didn't do it on a couple of them, but that, we probably had a discussion. I mean, we're going back to March of last year, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the executive session notes from March 26th, 2019, April 9th, 2019, April 30th, 2019, May 21st, 2019, June 11th, 2019, 8/27, 2019, 9/24, 2019, October 15th, 2019, October 29th, 2019, as presented.
And two more.
There's two more, sorry.
Is it another?
November 12th and December 3rd.
No, November 12th says no executive session on my notes.
Yeah, we said that we were gonna have it, and then you get it.
Okay, so in addition, the Monday.
And are we okay on 12-3? Did we not have it on 12-3?
Oh, 12-3 and 12-9, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Can I move the executive for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, considerations to waive facility revenues for Gym Guy's fitness.
We have Diane Daneky and Kathy Bernier-Garzón from Clyde Brown School with us this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We appreciate the chance to talk to you about the proposed exercise classes at Clyde Brown. After hearing staff talk about being too tired to exercise when they got home, we looked for an opportunity to have an exercise class at Clyde Brown. We found a Gym Guys trainer that will come to our school twice a week with her own equipment to do strength and cardio for staff who are interested. We hope to offer the classes right after school so teachers can reduce stress and physically benefit from exercise.
We secured this space, and we were hoping to obtain a waiver for the rental. We have since found out after speaking with Miss Bestis that a full waiver most likely will not be granted. We've heard from many of the interested teachers, and they're disappointed in the added fee, so we're trying to find a way to make the classes work. The additional $1,070 in rental fees for the space most likely will cause the classes to be canceled. If there is to be a fee, could we ask for a reduced fee? We'll only be using the stage that's right behind the gym as extended days using the full facility. We want to make sure that this opportunity can be affordable and convenient for the teachers.
There is a cost to have a trainer come to us. The trainer's charging us an average of $97 an hour, $75 on Fridays, and $120 on Wednesdays based on the number of participants. If she has to also cover the $40 rental fee, then she would be making an average of $57 for the one-hour class, as well as travel time and setup and breakdown time of her equipment. And we don't think she would agree to this reduction. So we appreciate your consideration and a reduction in the rental fee. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I see that there's also a fee for the custodian, but the classes run from 3:15 to 4:15. We have custodians on duty, so why are we going to charge for a custodian when they're in the building? We've always...
There is no custodial fee assessed.
It says right in the bottom.
That...
Oh, that's just the user fee. I apologize.
Right. It's just the user fee.
I'm sorry. I thought that was the custodian fee. Okay, so there is no custodian fees.
Mr. Chair, could we just waive 100% of the fee?
Second.
Whenever we would like.
Okay.
I think one other question that comes is, there's a lot of times when we look at the fee, and we look at fees, there's an association with the fact of whether it would be passed on or the savings would be passed on. A lot of times, most of the time it's to kids and the families that are using it. In this case, whether we waive the fee or not, there's not going to be a change unless I'm wrong, a change in the fee to the teachers who are going to attend.
But if there's a chance that the program won't run, and this is a good wellness program, and we should support our staff, I, how com, well, I can't say how confident. Is the feeling that if we have, if this trainer has to incur this extra cost, do you think that this is not going to happen?
Definitely on Fridays, because there's only five participants, so the trainer would only make $35 an hour. So I know that the Friday would not work out unless teachers paid the fee.
Were you able to reach the trainer and explain the situation that she has to be the one filling out the insurance forms and the facility rental form?
Yes.
And that there is a fee?
We did explain that we were going to come to the school committee this evening.
Okay.
But we did pass on the form.
And she indicated that she would not do it if there were $40 she had to absorb or a split?
We didn't really, we didn't really have that conversation.
Mr. Chair, I would, so tagging on to what Steve said, I would like to make a motion to waive 100% of the fee, because I'd like to ensure that nothing gets in the way of offering it for the staff.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think this is a great, it's a great program.
We wish you all the best.
Well, the question that...
We haven't voted yet. We're almost there. We're almost there.
And is it set? Like, is this for a finite period of time?
Yes, 13 classes on Wednesday and 13 on Friday.
Okay.
It's like January to March or something.
It'd be interesting in what the, what, like, if, so this is for this 13-week period, theoretically, if it's successful, I'd be interested in what the participation rates are if this is offered beyond the 13 weeks. So if we come back to this, so, we just want to be explicit, if we waive this, we're waiving it as for this initial 13-week period of time, and if there's a desire to do it for additional weeks, any fee request, waiver, would it have to come back to a new slot? Because then we can at least evaluate if the participation rate is higher, which hopefully, you know, it's one of those things, you can either plan for it, or people like it, and then more people go. But probably as a pilot, it's a very good idea.
So can I amend the motion to say waive 100% of the fee?
For the 23 sessions.
For the 23 one-hour sessions through, oh yeah, sorry.
January through March.
January through March. I think it was March it ends, right?
So it's 13 these days, so 26, and yes, it's in March.
Second again.
We have a makeup day, April 2nd and April 8th.
So we'll do the 20, we'll do for the 23 scheduled sessions.
Aye, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks for putting it together.
Next is consideration to accept donation for the trout project at the middle high school.
I love this.
Mr. Chair, if you're talking to, we have a letter explaining the trout program that is happening in both the middle and the high school, that is happening because of a very generous donation from a former staff member in honor of a family member. And the value is $1,300 per school for all of the equipment, for a total of $2,600. The students are very excited about it. The eggs have been received, there was a month of setup, and the eggs have hatched. If you're following it on Twitter, everybody's abuzz that the eggs have hatched. So we really appreciate that this anonymous donor made this possible for our students, and we'd like to request that school committee accept the donation.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept $2,600 in fish tank and related equipment for the new Teaching with Trout program in both the middle school and high school.
Second.
Can I move the executive? Any further discussions?
What will happen to the trout when they get big? Will we release them to the trout? Will they be, or so domesticated that they can't be released to the river? That's a fair question.
Says it in the memo. It's in the memo.
And be released.
They're gonna be released.
Will there be an event to release them?
We will certainly invite school committee to the release party.
I would like to attend that.
Are you gonna bring your fishing pole?
Catch a release. Catch a release.
Will the therapy dog be there, and how will he respond?
We will keep Harry away, yeah.
I love this program.
We do have a Fish Our Friends Club at the high school.
I think this is a great program.
I love this.
This is very, and the fact that they are gonna...
I think that was on Twitter, I'm gonna have to follow it.
They can release them, that is very cool. We have to vote.
Can I move the executive? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We might be eating the trout.
Consideration to approve the memorandum of agreement for transportation.
Right, because we had done it in executive sessions, so now it's in...
Yes, so we have previously approved this in executive session.
Mr. Chair, we had a productive round of negotiations with the Milis Association of Bus and Van Drivers. We had several meetings over the course of a couple months. All of the, kind of the highlights are listed in the memorandum of agreement. We did, just to kind of highlight a couple things, we are experiencing a shortage, not just us, almost all districts and companies are experiencing a shortage of drivers, and we did an analysis of our hourly rate, and we were not competitive at all. We were able to raise the hourly rate to put us more competitive, as well as some additional items to show respect to our drivers and to make it a better working place. Some uniforms, we're gonna get some consistent uniforms, we're gonna provide them coats and raincoats and other equipment. We're gonna, we have some stipends that we increased. We're looking at, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have done a better job highlighting. There's a lot of language that talks about the disciplinary process, but we're also going to be paying for some training when drivers are in training. Nancy, is there anything else I'm missing here that's kind of the highlight?
There is a one-year bonus that we did put in after, for a new hire, for $500 bonus once they've celebrated their one-year anniversary with us.
Right. And also, we also, like we've done with other unions, we adjusted the steps. So we eliminated some of the lower steps, and we also added some steps to, because we have two different kind of tracks. We have a van driver, and then we have the bus drivers, right? And so by doing that, we'll have the ability to, people won't be looking necessarily to get out as soon as they hit the top step, so we stretched it out. And so we feel as a team that we, in a fiscally responsible way, met in the middle, and I think it's, hopefully we'll have better luck in keeping and maintaining and attracting new drivers.
Take a motion?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the Milis Association of Bus and Van Drivers as presented.
Can I move the executive? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, consideration to approve funding on literacy study.
Mr. Chair, we have Joan Lynn, our Director of Curriculum and Assessment and Professional Development, with us this evening to answer any questions she might have about proposal for the literacy study, if you want to just give a brief summary of that for the public. That would be great, Joan. Thank you.
So I put together a memo that I think you got the...
Yeah. Some of these things, as proposals, some of these things that have started in January were on agendas prior to the new year, that we had meetings canceled for snow and things like that. So some of these things, such as the gift of the trout, were received and we're accepting them now, even though they, formally accepting them now, even though...
They've hatched.
They've hatched, and they've been here, but we weren't aware of it.
Say we didn't vote for them, what would have happened to the trout? We would have been in a quandary, to say the least.
So, sorry. And this is another one where this information was provided to us a few weeks ago.
So over the past several years, we have continually looked at our literacy program in the entire district, but primarily we look at Clyde Brown, because that's where the instruction starts. And we know through lots of research, the effect or the growth that takes place at the younger ages, and the lack of growth and what that could mean for some students, and the implications for later success in life. And while we have tried many things, and we have seen successes, and we've had less than what we've anticipated in some other areas, the bottom line is that we feel that we can always do better, and that are we providing the best that we can possibly provide to all of our students at Clyde Brown as they learn to read. There is an age where it becomes less about learning to read and more about reading to learn, and we want to make sure that our students are in the best possible position to make that transition. And so for the last several years, we, as I said, we've had successes, and we've had other areas where we feel like we just can't put our finger on the crux of something that has the potential to be very good. And so we started talking about the opportunity to have an outside organization come in and to help guide us through that process. And we sought out other suggestions for people who, other districts that might have had audits done in the past. And whether we call it a literacy audit, or we call it a literacy study, the bottom line is we're looking to find out, what are we doing, what's successful, what are areas that we need to do better in, and how do we pull that all together? So in the end, there were two organizations that you were presented with the proposals for both. One is Teachers 21, which is a highly regarded organization, and really their mission, and I apologize for not having the actual wording for it, but their actual mission is to just sort of, in general terms, improve instruction and leadership, and a great organization. We've used them in the past for different areas where we wanted to focus. But the second organization is the Hill Organization, and that's out of Mass General. And their only purpose is to improve literacy, and that's the only thing they focus in on, and they really don't ever sway from that. So in talking to both companies and trying to figure out what their suggestions might be, and where we thought we needed to do some work, the two proposals were presented to you. Originally, the proposal for Hill was a little bit more, but in talking to the woman in charge, Darcy Hill, I say that last name, I'm not positive, but it's Darcy Hill, but anyway, in talking with her...
Burns, Darcy Burns.
Barnes, thank you, Burns.
Burns.
One of the things that we were talking about was the size of Milis. The original proposal involved several days of investigating and meeting with the literacy, what will become a literacy organization here, committee, and we just felt like we weren't that big. We did not need to spend multiple days. So the price came down, it came down from about $10,000 to just about $8, knowing full well that it could come down even more. So right now, my, the proposal that I wrote, as well as my belief, is that the Hill Organization out of Mass General is the one that will focus primarily only on literacy, and it is the best one for us to be looking at for helping us move forward. And while the proposal is just about $8,000, I believe, $7,953.12, that is the outside end of what it could cost, the top end, if we wind up cutting down the number of days and the time that they're going to spend with us as they're sharing their data, and we wind up cutting some days, she really felt that it could come down a little bit closer to $6,000. And the, again, both organizations, highly regarded, has nothing to do with that being the reason, just that this is their one area of focus. And I believe it will help us to pinpoint areas for us to look at, what are we doing well, and then what could we use a little boost for?
Mr. Chair, I have two questions, one for Joan, and then one for the superintendent. The first one is, do we have this up to $8,000? Where are we going to take this money from?
We do. Mr. Wigan and I looked at the budget, he has a budget memo update in your packets that was for the December meeting. And because we have had difficulty hiring enough paraprofessionals, and we've had two, the hires leave for other positions, there is salary savings in that line that we are proposing to use to fund this.
Okay, and my second question, maybe either for the superintendent or you, Joan, could you envision, or when you were having discussions with these groups, things that could impact the budget going forward, beyond the study? Meaning, are we looking at, no, I'm gonna say, a new curriculum around elementary school reading? Are we looking at additional people that we may have to hire because we are going into the budget season? So one, it's one to fund the budget, fund the study now, but in FY '22? No, '21. FY '21 coming forward.
I do see the potential is there, absolutely. First of all, anytime there's new and new research, that has the impacts on materials that if we found that we had a weakness in a certain area, we certainly would want to make sure we had the appropriate materials. But I also see the potential there for professional development. If one, and not necessarily internal, where our teachers would just be doing some workshops, which we also have very highly qualified teachers here, but the potential for either having someone come in to work with the staff as a whole, or for us to be able to send some people out to workshops or courses in order to do that.
So when would the study be done, and when would we have an idea potentially for budget implications going forward? When do you think we would know?
The original plan called for just about two months. So we were planning to start it in January, which I think is still possible, we're just getting a little closer to midpoint here for them to do something in January. But either way, the original plan was for January to March, and we'd have some sense in March as to where our next steps would be.
Yeah, we don't have to have exact numbers, but an estimate in March would work.
Sure.
And the administrative team has been involved for the past month in developing budget proposals, and so there will be some estimates, or maybe placeholders, for the professional development and materials. It, you know, at least as an estimate.
Sure.
We may not have a real entire handle on the whole thing, but we can put some placeholder estimates in.
I would really like for us to have a two- or three-year plan coming out of this, as to what our top priority is, and how do we move forward with that top priority, and then to be able to figure out what else we can figure in, in a timeframe that makes sense, because everyone over in that building teaches literacy. So everyone is impacted by changes that we're going to make or whatever. So it's not something we can do because it's just a small group of people, and we'll, you know, train a small group if that's what the results show us. So it impacts everybody over there. So I don't see us coming in in March and saying, okay, this is what we need, and, you know, this is our plan, and it's going to be rigorous and robust, and we're gonna fix it all by June. We're not.
No, but I was, my question was about budgetary implications and estimates. It sounds like you've already had these discussions, and you're putting placeholders in, so.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve funding up to $8,000 for the literacy study.
Can I move the executive? Any further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we, do we have to signify Hill? Because it was two.
Well, the other one wasn't $8,000, it was way more.
Yeah.
The other one was $55,000.
Yeah.
Fair point.
I think we're okay. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Consideration to approve purchase of furniture in the amount of $6,398.28.
Mr. Chair.
This is given.
If I remember correctly, these are the chairs that we had a quote for that we wanted to make sure that we approved, so.
Are those the replacement ones for the ones that were just?
Correct. Yep, yep. So for the public, there were chairs that were ordered for the Clyde Brown School. As they came in, it was found that they, for the preschool, so it was found that they were too large for the preschool students. So this is purchasing chairs to replace the ones that are too large, so right-sized chairs for preschool folks. So I make a motion to approve the amount of $6,398.28 for the purchase of furniture. Sorry, I'm getting the exact.
Twenty-eight chairs.
Fifty-six chairs.
Fifty-six, yeah.
Twenty-eight and twenty-eight.
Yeah, for 56 chairs.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution to approve participation in U.S. EPA Tools for Schools Indoor Air Quality Program.
It's for the Clyde Brown.
Mr. Chair. As part of the CHIPS certification that we pursued at the elementary school building level to gain credits and a higher reimbursement rate through the MSBA, plus for the purpose of being environmentally sound and sustainable, having a building, a new building that is efficient, energy efficient, as well as best practices in energy sustainability, et cetera. The CHIPS program is like LEEDs, if people have heard of that. And as part of that, we are required to do two things. One is to participate in the U.S. EPA Tools for Schools Indoor Air Quality Program that we are familiar with already because of our previous involvement with air quality at Clyde Brown. And one of the letters in your packet attests to that, and we must then designate who will be in charge of monitoring air quality and overseeing the participation in the Tools for Schools program, and that would be Mr. John Angler or whoever is the Director of Operations in the future, but he is our current Director of Operations. So the other letter attests to that fact. And then there's a little bit of background information on what the various aspects of the air quality program, Tools for Schools program entail. So this is actually just a resolution by the committee to participate.
Mr. Chair.
I propose a resolution that the Millis Public Schools will participate in the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Tools for School Program and develop and implement an indoor environmental action plan. In addition, the person responsible for implementing the plan will be the Director of Operations, and at this moment, it's Mr. John Angler.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Last of our action items is consideration to have the first reading of Policy 5.7.4.
Mr. Chair.
I can waive the first reading.
I was gonna just ask, yeah.
And we just today received from our legal counsel their review, there was a minor change, not much of a change at all, but we have provided you with the version of the policy, started with an MASC sample policy that legal counsel has reviewed.
Mr. Chair. Is, can you give us some background on why this is coming forward? Was there a new law or a law updated?
Actually, we have, as anybody might have noticed around the middle high school and the old Clyde Brown, we have followed this law. There is a Mass General law requiring that there be no idling, that vehicles must turn off their ignition while on school grounds. And there, I forget, the law has been in place for many years, I think over 20 years, and I don't have the exact date, but we have followed the law, we have the appropriate signage posted, but we did not have a policy. So as part of the CHIPS process, we have to adopt a policy that is a no motor vehicle idling policy on school grounds. And then we will disseminate and provide the public with reminders about this policy. It's an advantageous time to remind them that there is no idling on school grounds.
Will there be any administrators monitoring the idling in and around the Clyde Brown or the middle school, high school?
We will talk about, we'll have to brainstorm ways to enforce the policy.
I was just checking.
And the, but there is, it's not, you know, we have been following the law, we just didn't have a policy in place.
We have to memorialize it through CHIPS. Mr. Chair. I make a motion to initiate the second reading of Policy 5.7.4, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds.
Do we have to make motion away?
I thought we already did that.
No, sorry, we didn't.
Oh. Mr. Chair. I make a motion to waive the first reading of Policy 5.7.4, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Move to the second, please.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion to move to the second reading of Policy 5.7.4, Motor Vehicle Idling on School Grounds.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I will, I'll read the first, I'll read the policy. Motor vehicle idling on school grounds. No motor vehicle operator shall cause or allow any motor vehicle operated by him or her on school grounds to idle unnecessarily except for any of the following reasons. Traffic conditions over which the driver has no control or is following the directions of a device or person authorized to direct traffic flow. Queuing at a school while activity actively engaged in picking up or discharging students. Turbocharged diesel engine cooldown or warm-up if required by manufacturer specifications. Maintenance of appropriate temperature when under 35 degrees or over 80 degrees, not to exceed three minutes in any 15-minute period for school buses, or one minute in any 15-minute period for other motor vehicles, and for circumstances involving safety emergencies and servicing or repairing motor vehicles. The term "school ground" shall mean in, on, or within 100 feet of the real property of the school, whether or not it is in session, and shall include any athletic field or facility and any playground used for school purposes or functions which is owned by the municipality or school district, regardless of proximity to a school building, as well as any other parking lot. A port-tenant? Parking lot?
Appertainent.
Appertainent?
Yeah, appertainent, yeah. Appertainent.
We're all involved. A pertinent?
Should I type it in and see how they pronounce?
To such a school athletic field facility or playground. Reasonable effort shall be made by the district to identify by signage, all known in actual air intake systems, which may be within 100 feet of an idling motor vehicle. A motor vehicle operator shall not idle a motor vehicle, a motor, a motor within 100 feet of such air intake system unless the Millis Public Schools has determined that alternative locations block traffic, impair student safety, or are not cost-effective. The Millis Public Schools shall erect and maintain a conspicuous location on school grounds, no idling signage as described below. All such signage shall contain appropriate sized font so as to be visible from a distance of 50 feet. The text would be, no idling, penalties of $100 for first offense and $500 for second and subsequent offenses, Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 16B, and Code of Mass Regulations 54027.00. It shall be the responsibility of the school administration to ensure that each school bus driver employed by the Millis Public Schools and not by a school bus contractor shall upon employment, and at least once per year thereafter, sign a document acknowledging the receipt of copies of MGL, Chapter 90, Section 16B, and Code of Mass Regulations 540, Section 27. The prohibitions contained in General Law, Chapter 90, 16B, shall be enforced by state or local law enforcement agencies. The legal reference for this policy is General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37H, Chapter 90, Section 16B, and Code of Mass Regulation 540, Section 27.
One question that I have, doesn't mention it here. Are law enforcement or emergency response vehicles included in this or excluded? This policy is silent on that?
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if there's another law or?
What says involving circumstances of safety emergencies? Wouldn't they feel until like safety and emergency vehicles?
I guess it would depend on if there was an emergency situation going on or if there was just a public safety vehicle idling for a non-emergent reason.
Right.
I'll check.
Okay.
Appertainent is belonging or pertinent. They could have just said it a little simpler, but so be it.
Lawyers, attorneys.
All right. So all those in favor of the second reading?
Aye.
Aye.
So we can move the, schedule the third reading for our next meeting.
And if we can just, I don't, I just don't know, I just know.
Okay.
All right. Time and learning, we've already discussed the literacy study, and CPAC has requested to come to a February meeting. So.
Actually, I'd like to ask Joan Lynn to come on up back up if you, just if, in case the committee has any questions. We have reviewed over vacation.
Bless you.
Pardon me. The timeline, as school committee suggested, and been able to move up the elementary principal search timeline by about a month. So you have a revised timeline in your packets. So should conclude by the beginning of March.
So this week, one of the, two things have happened so far this week. We have, I'm just reading off of the timeline that we actually had, the week of January 6th, we were putting out invitations to the Executive Board for Homeschool Association as well as the Clyde Brown School Council. That has happened. And we actually have a couple of people who've already submitted letters of intent that they'd like to help and serve on those committees. And the teachers' invitation is going out tomorrow morning.
Mr. Chair. Do we get an invitation to be on that?
You were actually invited last time. Last time I came and presented, I invited anybody who wanted to serve on the committee.
Okay. I would like to do that if you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So, unless there are any questions, it is just.
I didn't have any. No, I didn't have any. I read through all of it. Looks good.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thanks, Joan.
Looks great, thank you.
So, in your packets, you have a budget update by Mr. Wigan for kind of the end of this or mid-December was when he wrote it. It was for our December meeting. Just with some updates, nothing, nothing to take action on at all. He's projecting, he is ill tonight, but we are in the process, we have an administrative team meeting and hopefully he'll be back tomorrow. We are in the process of developing budget requests, our so-called wish list, or some are critical needs, some are a prioritized list of needs, and in the process of developing the FY '21 budget that perhaps we can have at the January meeting, perhaps a working session with school committee. Unless there are any questions that I can ask, I mean answer, about that. The good news was that he noted in his memo also that through the efforts of Representative David Linsky, the legislature has approved the $100,000 earmark grant for the HVAC Systems and Roof Study for the middle high school. So the, our funds approved at town meeting via an article can be returned to the town or staying wherever they were.
It is clear that Representative Linsky has looked out for the town of Millis for many, many years, from the school building project to other special funding sources. We are definitely served well by Representative Linsky on Beacon Hill, as well as our state senators and, you know, our other rep. But Linsky himself has, Mr. Linsky himself has worked really hard for this district.
It's much appreciated.
Yeah. Mr. Chair. I actually, I just had a question about, so now that we have that $100,000 earmark, do we have to return that to town or if it?
If it was assigned to an article, we'd have to know how the article was written.
Okay.
Whether it was specifically set a study.
I did.
And it probably gets turned back.
Yeah, okay.
If it was more broadly written.
Okay.
I can check that I do believe it was for a design study.
I think you're right. I think it was very specific.
So December enrollment, you have an update, you have, actually, December and January enrollments. We were able to get January enrollments updated in your packets. We have increased in the last two months, increased by five students, mostly move-ins. We've also had a couple of students move out and have 81 choice students with 21 students still out of district. In your packets, you had for the December meeting, the NESDEC enrollment projection, which is quite interesting if you have a chance to take a look at it with a memo from Karen Leduke who had done the, through NESDEC, the enrollment projection. She notes that their projection fell within about 37 students of the previous K-12 enrollment, and that the enrollments are projected to increase over the next 10 years by about 12 students per year. When I went back, it was, we've had about a 10-year decline in enrollment of, we have 273 students, fewer students than we had 10 years ago, but because of the building in town now, that is projected to go back up. We did, Terry Wigan and I, attend the monthly departmental meeting at the town now and learned of two new projects that have been approved by the building committee and are going forward. One has 86 units, the other has 98 units, and also a 40B project that's coming online this year, which both, although that could add well over 100 students in the next year alone, and then in the future. And then in the future, they mentioned the Alpaca Farm and the GAF property, the Alpaca Farm just sold, and the GAF property is actively in the process of being sold, which both could add a lot of residential. So the projections you have are for a gradual increase, but it could become a faster increase with the building that we know has been approved in town. It's not so much higher birth rate, but really, actually, the building permits that is, are changing over time.
Mr. Chair, thanks, Nancy. One thing I sort of feel is necessary to say more for the public than for any of us here, is when we went through the process with the MSBA on the new Clyde Brown School, the administration and the project team did a very nice job working with NESDEC and trying to get them to increase their future enrollment numbers. And we actually went back a couple of different times, asking for those to be increased to affect the size of the school. And we were unsuccessful, which is sort of par for the course, as how other building projects have gone across the state. So reading that, and also reading her note in the memo that said, something to keep an eye on, that they've even called out that their projections are low, is something that we'll just need to make sure that we pay attention to as best that we can, but just for the public to understand that we did try to take that into consideration, because there was so much building happening at the time, and we knew it was going to continue. But unfortunately, we didn't have any luck.
Right, and to be fair, their projection of 12 students a year, that doesn't mean 12 students in kindergarten. They could be spread amongst all three schools.
Yeah. She does call it the building permit component, which is something that they weren't really willing to acknowledge in the past.
I know, we tried.
Right.
We tried.
So I'm sure we'll be fine.
So, you know, it's just to be watched, and we do pay close attention, and the NESDEC projections are very helpful in looking both historically and a look ahead at what we might be planning for. And then just an update on the phone installations, they have been completed pretty much for the middle high school. And I have to say, Jen Starr and her team have done a fabulous job supporting staff with installation, with some training, some on-the-spot training. So there is an automated system that we're all getting used to, with a little bit of differences in call forwarding, but staff members do have voicemail boxes for the first time, so the public can request an extension and leave a voicemail for staff members. So that is wonderful, and that was funded by a town warrant as well, and we appreciate the help of Diane Germain for both. It's a town-wide system now, so town offices, Clyde Brown, and the middle high school all can contact each other with just an, calling an extension versus having to call out sidelines.
Nancy, in our contract with the teachers, the MTA, we actually have, we have language in there about checking email. There's nothing about voicemail. Have you had a conversation with the MTA to say, there's an expectation that, and whatever that is, you're going to check your voicemail, because this is a new, this is a new way to do business? And I think we should level set, I think a lot of people will defer to email, but people will start using this, and if we don't tell them what our expectations are, people could, may never go into their voicemail.
Because they've never done it before, so...
Well, so is this like a voice-over IP system? Because if it is, they'll get an email saying they have a voicemail.
If we have that in our system, we have one at work, I get...
This is a voice-over IP. So that's a good point, and we'll have some conversations about, both at the administrative level, and then in dialogue with the MTA, what some common expectations are.
And then teachers, when they're meeting parents and going forward, they can say, I'm better at, I'm better at voicemail, or I'm better at email. And then that sets the parents, because it's a two-way street. I'm much better at email. You're going to get me better on email than, but you can always leave a voicemail, but just know.
Do you get a email when you get a message?
I don't know with that yet. I think it's, it might be possible, I'll check.
I know, it's really...
I'm guessing it's probably not how it got configured initially, but a configuration that they could easily do.
It's very convenient.
At work, I had to turn that on.
Yes, you have to turn it on.
I had to, I had to select to do that, so now it does.
I bet Diane Germain will know, or can find out even, or Jen.
Or Jen, yeah.
Yeah, or Jen.
We've been very pleased with TPX's implementation person, who has helped us, and Jen Starr has worked, been in contact many times a day with that person, and so we can find that out. It might be useful, I think very useful to have an alert that you have new voicemail.
That covers the contract, too.
You just play it in the email.
Oh, really?
Covers the contract.
That's right. Ms. Gibbons is making a good point, then it covers the contract, because then it becomes an email.
Right.
That's for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up.
And you can listen to it, and if it comes up in the email, you pop, hit play, and it...
Okay.
So maybe it becomes, everyone is required to do that, so everyone is getting them in their emails.
We should just default it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, as a system-wide setting, right.
There is no harm in doing it. And it becomes much more convenient than going to the phone.
Right, and it's...
In fact, I got one right here.
This is just like one, 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 check.
This is what it looks like, this is my work.
I get them all the time.
And I can just hit play.
And then on the phone, you can dial it right back.
And...
Because it helps, like, if I'm at one office instead of my...
Right, exactly.
Like, if I'm Walt them instead of Boston, all my voicemails in Boston, I get it here, so I see that somebody left a message there.
Or if you're on the Cape, and you can just act like you're Walt them, or in between.
Whatever, whatever, mobile technology.
That's right.
We want to be available all the time.
Work from anywhere.
Cannot escape it.
No, you cannot.
No, but all kidding aside, I think that is important, because this is a new way of doing business.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
I think, at one of our upcoming meetings, we're going to have one seniors, actually, Haley Roach is coming to request about part of her senior project, but we have to coordinate when there is a whole basketball game for them, because she's on the basketball team, so hopefully she'll pop in after. So committee reports, Elementary School Building Committee?
Our last meeting was towards the end of December, so active work on the parking lots or anything outside, which was the site work, that's really what's left now, stopped mid-December due to the weather and the temperature. So the, what will be the permanent, but right now it's still the new, drop-off routine is active, and it'll be quiet. It'll be quiet for a few months. The committee will still meet, because there's bills to pay and whatnot, but everyone's going a little bit into a down period for a couple of months. The project managers are working on paperwork, part of the closure paperwork for the project. And then in the spring, they'll start back up, finalize the permanent route for traffic, and then move on, probably in the May timeframe, to the tennis courts, so that they can finalize that component and be done. There was one, for anybody that may have heard about it, there were some leaks in the building, probably about a month ago, at the beginning of December, and those were caused by, so the roofing company came out right away, they addressed it right away, they fixed it right away. We've been told it's fairly standard for those types of things to happen in a new building, and it was actually caused by some debris that was on the roof that got through and just punctured some holes in a, in a, some layer that's on the roof, that's easily fixable. But the important part of that is, in the spring, that company's going to come out and do a full review and analysis of the roof, to make sure that there's nothing else up there, or any other things that could possibly cause that in the future.
Response? National Legislative Practice, as well as a thank you letter.
Yeah, thank you to Looters Environmental for a $75 donation that they are generous enough to give us every year. And then the Millis Midway articles for December, fabulous turpsickery nutcracker again this year, an article on the MCAS results, an article on the soccer championship, sectional championship, and semifinal, almost championship, an article on Michaela Hafford and her cross-country championship, an article on the Millis Public Schools being accepted, invited into the League of Innovative Schools, and the conference that Maureen Knowlton and I went to through the League of Innovative Schools, which was wonderful. What we're doing currently with that is attending, having monthly virtual meetings with schools across the country on how to increase authentic, real-world learning experiences for our students, both inside and outside the classroom, and will mini internships and job shadowing and other things that we will have more information on when Mr. Malaney does his, it's not the handbook, it's a program of studies presentation in March. And then's a wonderful little article on Kayleen Adams, and how well she is doing both in soccer and basketball. So we appreciate the Millis Midway news coverage.
They do a good job.
Yeah, great.
They do a good job.
School committee announcements. We have no older new business. Anything with regard to the parent professional?
No.
No, because we didn't have a meeting. Our first meeting is next Tuesday.
So really, we just need a motion to go, consideration to discuss strategy in respect to superintendent contract.
Because we just did this transportation.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to move, to end open session, to go into executive session to discuss the contract for the superintendent not to return to open session.
Say it.
Seconded, it's a roll call vote, Robert?
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
All right. We will turn to executive session not to return, the next time we'll be on camera is Tuesday, January 21st.